Clinton, Phil, and I think order must have the roll call.
Kessler.
Yes, here.
Walters.
Here.
Rorden.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Binner.
Here.
Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Times of occasion to give by Councilman Rorden.
Father, we just thank you for this day and Lord, we just thank you for keeping your hand upon all of our city employees and all of our staff and the mayor and our council. Lord, we just pray that you keep your hand upon us, watch over us, and keep your hand upon us as we go about the business of the city in your precious name, amen.
Congratulations.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have the presentation approved of minutes, minutes of the August 10, 2020.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of the August 10, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion second approved minutes of August 2020, August 10, 2020. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Abstain.
Crum.
Abstain.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item one says to be heard, Sedgwick County Fire, they are not here, we'll go to item two, approval of license and bonds, A, retail liquor renewal for Hearst Liquor, 7127 South Broadway.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of the liquor license, the retail liquor license for Hearst Liquor at 7127 South Broadway.
Second.
Motion second to approve the renewal of Hearst Liquor, discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item B is the refuse holler's renewal for Allen and Son's Waste Services, 3645 Essner, South Litchfield, 67213.
Make a motion to accept the refuse license renewal for Allen and Son's Waste.
Second.
A motion second to approve the renewal for Allen and Son's Refuge Holler's License. Discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item three is induction of ordinance resolutions, A, resolution waiving the gap requirements of KSAA 75-1120A for the city of Hazville, Kansas, something required annually since we are truly not requiring all of our books begun on gap.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution waiving the gap requirements of KSA 75-1120A for the city of Hazville, Kansas.
Motion second to approve the resolution waiving gap as presented, discussion, question?
Kessler.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Rorden.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Harton.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Item four, notice that communications, A, government body announcements.
Mr. Mayor, the library, again, their hours right now are running Monday through Thursday from 10:00 in the morning until 7:00 in the evening, Friday's from 10:00 to 5:00, Saturdays is from 10:00 to 2:00, but that's limited, you gotta basically call them and let them know what you want, and they'll bring it to you at the door. The only entrance that's open at the door is the north entrance, and masks are required if you go into the library. Also wanted to mention, if you hadn't heard, there is a special school board meeting tomorrow, oh, excuse me, Wednesday at 7:00, you can watch that meeting via Zoom on the internet, you can go to the district website for information. As of right now, school for grades one through six and ninth grade will begin on September 10th. You'll see those school zone lights start flashing, and just ask people to keep their eye out for kids that could be out walking to and from school as of right now, that's the schedule on September 10th, and that's all I have for right now.
Senior Center Programs, they have chair yoga on Monday and Wednesday at 10:00, steps every Tuesday and Thursday at 10:00, Panera Bread pickup every Wednesday at 8:00, Bible study Thursday at 2:00, cards every Tuesday at noon, the next round of bingo will be Wednesday, September 2nd at 12:30, say the game room's available for senior center members during their regular business hours. Questions, senior center, 529-5903. There's also going to be a ribbon cutting on September the 2nd at 1:30, this is the county putting this on, it's the ribbon cutting for the 55th Street at Campus High School, where the expansion has been up there. You're invited if you want to attend that at 1:30 on September the 2nd, which is a Wednesday.
I've got an announcement also, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
With a lot going on in our world nowadays, and the kids getting ready to go back to school, there's gonna be an America Bless God Rally, it's gonna be held this coming Saturday at Rick's Park in the Mansell, may have seen some of the advertisements going around, you know, Facebook, it's on the digital sign here on the corner, should be on Channel 7 also, I believe, just gonna read parts of it to you. So again, it's called the America Bless God, it's a rally over at Rick's Park, it's gonna be this coming Saturday, August 29th at 7:00 PM, bring your lawn chairs, also with the exaltation and the city church worship band, so it'll be a band going on there, special guest speaker would be Jim Want, he owns a Bear Rock and Want Coffee up in Wichita area. So it's a time to pray for the healing of our nation, for an end to the coronavirus, for our children and teachers as they return to school, for local law enforcement, and for the presidential election. For the purpose of social distancing, it's gonna be held at the park, like I said, plus masks are recommended, anybody has any questions, they can call 524-5000, that's 524-5000.
Any other announcements, council? If not, I have one further announcement. If you remember that Janie has decided to retire, this actually is going to be Janie's last council meeting. So I've got some information that we probably ought to all go over. As 3/17/85, Janie was first hired as a police dispatcher, which we know is not an easy job out here, it's different than then and what it sure is now. 4/22 of 1985, she was sworn as a communication officer. February 21st of 1994, she transferred to the city clerk's office as data processing coordinator slash bookkeeper, whatever that means, Janie may be able to tell us, I guess. 6/18 of 2000, she transferred to the payroll employee benefit section. October 10th, 2007, she transferred to human resources manager slash assistant city clerk. And then in June 13th, 2011, she was appointed as the city clerk slash treasurer, so she's been doing that for the last nine years. So if you add up all that time, it's actually 35 years that Janie has been with the city of Hazville, working in all the different sections of the city and knows it well. With that, we've got a 35-year service award plaque that we want to present to Janie Cox for her 35 years of service, since she decides she's not wanting to attend any more council meetings, we thought we better do this tonight, so.
On the spot.
It's not the best night.
Someone we can get on.
She's gonna hide in the corners.
Gina, that's the biggest smile I've ever seen.
Okay, we'll move on, I'm sure that she would like the doors to move. Notice communications, item B is email from the council communication regarding channel changes, and item five is other business, A, consideration of the zoning code amendments 2020-01. Before you, you have the information from the staff from the planning commission's meeting, where they held the public hearing on August the 13th. They've made a rec, the staff has made a recommendation to us, and Zach has put a memo together for you, also showing the recommendation that he is asking and what staff is. The planning commission passed the revisions to the zoning code pertaining to cargo containers, wireless communication facilities, and assisted living facilities. They made assisted living facilities a conditional use in A and a conditional use in BB and B zoning districts. They were only looking at making A and to, assisted living into A and to be approving the use of assisted living in BB and B. This is where I think, as you can see from Zach's memo, they've gone further than what anything that we should be doing, if you were to listen to that meeting, they are making it as hard as possible for us to get assisted living center in town, which is truly not what we've been trying to do for years. So again, the recommendation that we've got is, and from staff recommendation, is truly to approve staff's recommendation, and Angie's here, if you wanted to go further that, Angie?
Well, I think you covered most of it, but if anybody has any questions or's had a chance to read it, like the mayor covered, go ahead.
If we decide to go with the staff recommendation, how would the motion have to be, because I know we have to have two, would we have to first disregard, or I don't know how we, the zoning committee's recommendation and to get two-thirds of a vote against that and then do this, or if we just say, take the staff one, if it passes by more than two-thirds, does that take care of it?
That is my understanding, we just need to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, and as long as there's two-thirds vote, it would carry.
Yeah, you're gonna be overriding the planning commission, so with two-thirds vote, you can do whatever council chooses to do.
Okay.
I have a question, I was wondering, what was the rationale for putting conditions on that, could you tell, remind us?
For the BB and B, or just for all of it in particular?
Well, primarily for the assisted living, yes.
The reason for putting it in the A zone with the conditional use is because it is typically just single-family residential around that, that would allow the opportunity for planning commission and then governing body to put certain restrictions as far as lighting, noise control, some screening that could be additional, to look at whichever area they're actually putting it in, and base those conditions off the actual area that they would be going into versus the zone change.
But again, by doing that, they make it more difficult for anyone to come in here and in a assisted living, because as we bring in property, it's brought in in A, and right now, there is really no property that is even in B and double B. So any developer coming in here is going to have to do a zone change, and then they've got to go through the actual other part of it too. So they've made it more difficult than what it really ought to be by bringing an assisted living center into this town, which we have worked for years in doing it. Why the planning commission decided to do that, I guess, is what they are, but as far as I'm concerned, they are truly wrong and should not put those restrictions on B and double B out there.
Okay, but I have a comment about that.
Sure.
Because you put it on all three, and you say everything, and it stated that, everything comes in as A. You say it's only if they have a specific project in mind do they change it to B or B and B B. So if they're wanting to do specifically a assisted living center, then they don't even have to change the zoning, they can just do it in A, correct?
As a, as a conditional use.
Right, but if, I mean, if you leave conditional use in B and B and B, then it's, I mean, like you said, everything's at A, so they wouldn't have to do two steps, they just, okay, we want to do assisted living, we'll stay in A and just go for a conditional use.
They could, but right now, as we know, there are no in B and double B, they could be A, but they actually are too saying to this city, we don't want you in here. That is truly not what we want in this city, we truly want to make people know that we are truly a city that we worked with at this point.
Yeah, but if we leave a conditional use application for A, then they don't even have to do a zone change.
Understand that, but what they've done is truly make it more difficult in two assisted living centers. From what I see, and I was listening to the meeting, I'd take my money elsewhere.
I have a comment, I don't know, maybe there's another option here, besides the three that are presented, perhaps we could separate the cargo and the wireless in one area and the assisted living in a third, so we could make that decision on whether it's under condition or not.
You have to send that back to them to have them go through the whole thing again, if that's the case, you cannot.
That would be one of the conditions.
To send it back, yeah, yeah, you have to send it back if you do that, which means you open a whole can of worms again with public hearing.
Can you tell me, I read it, there's a lot to read right there.
There's a lot to read.
Can you tell me what we have now, and what the staff wants, and what the planning board is recommending?
Are you talking for everything, or specifically the assisted living?
Just the assisted living.
Currently, the only allowance we have right now is for a nursing home facility, and that would be in a light commercial zone, on up to like your heavy commercial light industrial, within the definition, it's, the nursing center does have more staffing needs, more requirements, this would be bringing in, you'd still have your nursing home definition, but then you'd be adding the assisted living definition as well, and then separating those out. With the assisted living, the recommendation is to put that into the residential zones and under A as a conditional use, because it is more of a residential facility than the nursing home, and it would still make those residents feel like they are part of the community.
So put the assisted living facility in A under a conditional use, correct?
Correct, in the A single family, yes.
And what about B and BB, if staff wants nursing on a assisted living facility in B and BB also as a conditional use permit?
We would prefer that as a permitted use only. And another reason for that would be, a lot of these communities would also then have senior apartments adjacent to it, or senior living facilities that might be duplexes, so they might come in and do the zone change, and then they would be able to then do the assisted living and have it all in one nice neat little area.
People we've discussed want to do senior housing also, they don't want to only do assisted living, they would truly want to bring in assisted living and senior housing, which truly would make a change as to what Angie just said, if we were to be going with the recommendation of the planning commission at this point.
As I look around, I do see some gray hairs, and obviously, we are in need of assisted living and/or senior housing, I also see the issue with having conditional use attached to that. I hear you, Mayor, that says it might be a can of worms to send it back, it seems to me that it's kind of, because I want us to grow, I want us to continue to develop, I want us to provide those kind of things. But right now, looking at this report and what I've heard, it seems that perhaps the best solution now would be just send it back, saying, separate this out with the commercial cargo and wireless, and do your thing with conditional, and do it separate with anything for senior living or assisted living or something like that.
The cargo and the other are not a question.
That's not with the condition.
Cargo and the other are not a question here, they've already, they have already approved that, so asking them to separate it is not what.
That's not the issue.
No, it's not even been brought up.
I think the main thing, though, is to say, is to take off the condition for, like you're saying, for the senior living or the assisted living.
You can do that by a vote tonight.
And I think that us, I brought this up years ago, because my parents said something about it, we have people that have lived in this city their entire life, and they don't want to leave here, and there's no place to go now, you have to go to Andover, you have to go to Clearwater, we've been trying for so long to get somebody to come in here, the reason you want to, everything comes in at A, so it's already gonna be at A, if you let them come in at A with a conditional use, which is what Zach is asking for, and the staff already mentioned, it means that they can come in and they're gonna be over there in a residential area, and they're like a little residential community within themselves. But it allows the city to say, this is great, just make sure that your lighting in the back of your buildings or whatever, the face that might hit the residents over here, that can't be above this watt, that can't be above this height, you need to watch how you do this or how you do that. Right now, they're not even in A, so they'd have to ask for a zone change, then they'd have to do all these other things to do, because right now, senior housing's not even in our zoning anywhere, we're trying to figure out where we want to put this new type of business. So this would allow it, so that they wouldn't have to go through the zone change and then find out what all they had to do, they just have to find out what they have to do to get the conditional use, because they're already okay for A. Because if you go over to Main Street Place, it's gonna be similar to that, it's a little community, it's just like a residential place, so they fit in a residential area. And we need to get, I talked to Zach for quite a while today, we have a company that is willing, or seems very willing to come in here and really put some money into the city and make it look good, and we don't want to give them so many hoops to jump through. We need them to be able to come in here, get that land, give us a plan, us tell them, you need to, you could have this many parking, whatever, watch the lighting, they want to be able to access the water over there and stuff, because they're in that lot and everything else, we need to let them understand that these are, that's what you need to give us, and it's, and you can build it here, and it's just less hoops to go through.
I'm just a little confused, are we asking for conditional use or not conditional use?
We're asking for conditional use in A and non-conditional use in D double B.
Okay.
And that's where that's bringing up, if they are putting in senior housing, duplex and so on and so forth, senior housing, they would have to do a zone change also. If they're bringing in both of those, they can bring in the assisted living as conditional use, but they would have to make a zone change, because it came into A to bring in B and double B.
We want to make it easier for them.
That's correct.
On the other hand, we also want to make it, what's the recourse for the residents that live over there, because like you said, if there's lights flashing, just like we had.
That's why it's under conditional use, we can regulate what that lighting's gonna be like.
Not if they change that over there to B or B and B, then it'll be there and there'll be no deal, they won't have, there won't be any conditional thing for delivery trucks all hours of the night, extra vehicles, I mean, there'd be no way to control that in B and B and B.
Well, that's only.
In an apartment complex, you have residential people, you don't have delivery drivers and things coming back and forth at all hours of the night.
Well, again, what amounts to, we truly need to make sure we can bring the assisted living in and A senior housing also.
Well, I understand that, but you also got to look at it the other way, because if it goes in over there and not over there on grant, that's back in a residential area, no matter how you get to it, it's through a residential area.
It is, I agree, but again, the conditional use on the assisted living is still conditional use.
Not if you put it in B and B and make it a part of it, the part of B and B instead of making it a conditional use of B or B and B.
That's correct.
So then you would have no way of putting conditions on it, you can only deliver.
But they still would have to do, they still have to do a zone change.
Well, I understand that, but then you have no conditional, conditions on there to say.
But the zone change can be turned down if that's the case at this point, they have to do a zone change. And if I was assisted living center, wanting to come in here and have to do a zone change, I'd tell you to go jump, because either you want us to bring in one, or you don't want us to bring in one, we'll go wherever people really want us to come in.
Well, I understand that, but when you're building $300,000 houses, you don't want delivery drivers up and down the street all night long.
Yeah, and that will be changed in the conditional use that they require in the assisted living in A, and then they have to do a zone change, they have to do the zone change in double B and B.
Right, but then when you put it in B and B, or BB and B, then the conditional part goes away.
They still have to make a zone change.
Well, I understand that, but once you put it into B or B and B, then there's no, there's no way you can put conditions on it to say they cannot make deliveries certain.
I understand that, and that's not what I'm saying, saying is that it's truly wanting to make sure that we can get an assisted living center in this city.
Well, I understand that, but we turn everything loose, and once they change it to B and B and B, then they can put their assisted living in there and deliver drivers all night long if they want.
Jan, I guess I have a question, why would they have delivery drivers all night?
Well, I'm not, I don't know, I'm just saying, deliveries in a residential area, I mean, 10 o'clock at night is the latest most people do it, but you don't know, I mean.
Well, honestly, I would think a senior, a senior living center like this, because it's already plotted for another neighborhood, with another neighborhood, I think you're gonna have a lot more traffic than you would with a senior facility, in the long run.
But if you run trucks.
But I don't understand why you run trucks, this.
SFNE delivers different times, hours of the night, I mean, the food trucks, the medical trucks, I'm just saying, there's, there's other things to think about too.
Okay, other discussion, council?
Well, I have a friend of mine who's on city council in Derby, and he lives over in the homestead, the district over there behind the Target in that area over there, and those are 350, 400,000 dollar houses, and they have that senior assisted living over there. He said when they first talked about bringing it in, he said people got up in arms and everything, so the city of Derby went ahead and done it. He said, none of this stuff that everybody in the meetings they went to came to fruition, nothing came, the traffic didn't increase, he said their property values have actually increased, because people are got, like he said here, Steve's parents, you know, my parents are gone now, but a lot of the people here, they grew up in this community, they lived here all their life and everything, they don't want to leave here. I don't, I, the, you know, I've heard some of the comments that says, well, you know, the traffic will increase, well, okay, I don't know how many senior citizens, when you get into assisted living or driving, they say, well, there'd be loud parties and stuff and everything. I don't know many, I don't know many senior seniors that have loud parties. I'm just saying, I, I think it's a bunch of baloney if you ask me, because this is something that this community has been wanting for a long time, but I've been on council almost 20 years, and this is stuff that we've talked about for a long time, wanting to get here, and I think, to me personally, I think it's the right thing to do.
That's right.
So just for clarification, what I'm understanding then is if we override this, and they want to, if senior living wants to come in, or assisted living, whatever, they would go into the, they would be A zone, and they would be conditional, if they wanted to go B or B, BB or B, or beyond, then they have to have a zone change, so it'd be another vote for that. Then I would recommend, I make a motion that the overriding recommendations of the planning committee, as I listed in number one bullet.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to override the planning commission and take staff's recommendation.
Okay, take staff's, I was just making sure that was part of it, that takes the staff.
That takes into account cargo, wireless, the whole parts of it as far as staff recommendation at this point, and to move no conditional use on B and double B at this point.
Right.
Everyone understand?
Do you have a question, want to get the, the discussion here, different subjects about the cargo containers, are there certain, are we having an issue with that right now? I mean, I know there's a couple places I've seen cargo containers, such as the advertisement that says you get off on the turnpike, would that affect that? Also, there's a storage area that.
That's the one we have in town now, this would help us regulate those type things, because we have no regulation now, so by putting this in, we do have regulation of regulating those then.
So we have none in there right now?
We have nothing now.
For zoning, right now?
Okay, so we don't have anything for.
Cargo.
I know the cargo was put over there so that we could hang the sign on to that. not follow under the sign ordinance?
Well, it may go in the sign ordinance, but doesn't anything to cargo where it's being, being located, that type of thing. We have no, we have no, in our zoning on cargo.
Oh, okay.
But this would, put that in there?
This only has, gives us regulation on cargo.
So they've got to, they'd have a year.
We could make them move it on what the timing is.
A year.
Make them move it, yeah. Angie, is that correct?
Yeah, they would have to come into compliance.
And there's also like, like a storage facilities, that may have them, would that affect them if, only if you could see them from the street?
Well, affects what they have to do with them and what they, regulations they have to meet with them, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Does the telecommunications part, was just verbiage, wasn't it, to get up the federal regulations?
Correct.
Yes.
Other discussion, council?
Call question.
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
No.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on and move on into the agenda. Which is the item six, department reports.
For the city clerks department, city hall will be closed on Labor Day, Monday, September seventh, and then that same week, we have red tag day, which is a water shut-off day, that'll be on Wednesday, September ninth. For the police department, our visiting officer is Master Police Officer Grady Germany, currently assigned to night shift, so I'm sure you met him on your way in. For the public works, we have an emergency repair that is being made in the wastewater treatment facility. JCI is doing the work for us, total cost, eleven thousand, seven hundred five dollars. A mixer motor in the basin, which is used to mix the sludge to prevent it from settling, is having some issues. JCI is going to disassemble it, clean the gearbox, replace bearings, oil seals, gaskets and shims before reinstalling it, repainting it, and replacing it in our basin. So that's something we're getting done right now. Also in the packet for public works, you'll find the code enforcement breakdown for twenty twenty. Recreation department, the activity center is taking registration for Where the Wild Things Run, which is a couch to five K running program. There is also a registration being taken for yoga and zumba classes. For the swimming pool, the last regular day that we're open this year will be Saturday, August twenty ninth. Then the following day, on Sunday, August thirtieth, we'll have the traditional dog days from noon to two thirty. Please make sure your dog is up to date on vaccinations, and it's five dollars at the door to get in.
Very good. Item seven, all agenda decisions to be heard, anyone out there, Will?
No.
No. Item eight, is bills be paid, any bills be paid for the last half of August?
I'd like to make a motion that we pay the last half of August bills.
Motion second, pay the last half of August bills. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item nine, council items, A, concerns, council? Mr. Crum?
Mayor, I have, it's, I guess it's a concern, too, but I just kind of wanted, every week in the Eagle and Beacon or on Kansas dot com, I know that it's a pay site, but they do give their COVID information as free. So once a week, they give the numbers of COVID cases by zip code. They give how many cases by zip code, how many people got tested that week, how many positive tests there were, basically, they break it down to like how many cases per ten thousand people. And I guess I see some lackadaisical things, and I see people complaining about making sure school gets to start and sports happens, and one of the easiest ways to make sure that we can try to get all those things back to normal, or started to normal, is to wear a mask when you're in public spaces with a lot of people. Just to kind of give you an update from this past week, I think the, it was the twenty-second, so just two days ago, Andale has twelve confirmed cases, and that equals out to about, they'd have eighty cases for every ten thousand people. Clearwater is actually the only place that has a higher average than Hayesville does. They have seventy-three cases, so that means they have a hundred and fifty-two positive cases out of every ten thousand people. Derby, who's almost twice our size, have a hundred and forty-nine cases, so they're fifty-three cases for ten thousand people. Goddard only has forty-five cases, Mays only has twenty-three, Mulvane has thirty-two, Valley Center has fifty-one. Here in Hayesville, we have a hundred and twenty-seven cases. That's eighty-nine cases for every ten thousand people. You know, the school boards meeting Wednesday to decide how we're going to do school, and you see everybody up in arms in Wichita that they've decided to go remote for, what, is it sixth through twelfth grade?
Right.
And they called off all fall sports. Also in this report, it gives all the zip codes in Wichita. I think all the zip codes in Wichita have higher numbers than we do. But like I said, Clearwater has more than us, but other than that, out of all the other suburbs around here, we have a higher average per ten thousand people than anywhere else. Our school board, I know, they're looking at data, and they talk to people at Sedgwick County all the time. If you really want school to start hybrid and give kids a choice to be able to go to schools and to keep sports going, then wear a mask when you go out in groups. That, there's, it's, it's shown data after data now, places that require masks, in those places, the numbers start to go down. So if you want Hayesville to be better than eighty-nine per ten thousand people, and get down to like, Mulvane's thirty-six per ten thousand people. So I mean, just think about, you want things to get back to normal, sometimes you have to do a little bit of work before you can get something done. So I just encourage people to please start wearing masks if they're going to be out in groups, if they're going to go to the store. It's, all the businesses in town are asking you to wear a mask anyway, be considerate of the workers and the other people that are in there, and wear a mask, please. That's all I got.
Other concerns, council?
I've got a question.
Yes.
I think we've received our ban, haven't we, for the senior center?
Yes.
I think it's at the parking lot right now, and that's why I was wondering if that was one that was out there.
Yes.
Are we still advertising for driver and dispatcher and all that?
They're working on the, all the paperwork that goes along with it and that type thing, and then trying to work up procedures so that we can truly keep everyone safe on the bus itself. So, and they'll be, there's, they'll be doing the, the painting, that type thing on the bus also, so.
Given the expected, uh, timing for that?
Haven't, haven't got any right at this point. I know they're working on trying to get all the procedures set out before we go jumping into it real quick.
Good.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it is in. Other concerns, council, or questions? If not, item B is the council action request updates, A, seven fifty East Forest Court. They went to court on eight eighteen, have about seventy-five percent of their lawn mowed and cleaned up. The court gave them two additional weeks, so we'll see if it all done, is done in two weeks. Item ten, adjournment?
Mayor, I'd also like a motion to adjourn twice, please.
Second.
Motion second, adjourn, discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Burden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.